All right. Let's call the work session to order, June 25th. Eddie, are you gonna kick us off for the RRS High Country Conservation Center Construction and Demolition Standards?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Teddy Wilkinson, Sustainability Administrator with the town. And I'm here to introduce this work session about construction and demolition waste. As you all are aware, as part of the Sustainable Brec Plan update that we did in 2022, the town established some goals around material management, both for reducing overall waste generation as well as diverting materials bound for the landfill through recycling and composting. And one of the strategies listed around these goals is looking at construction and demolition wastes specifically. And the memo in your packet highlights some of the background and work that's been done so far. But right now, just to dive right into it, I'd like to turn it over to Jen Shake from HC3 and Corey Manziel from RRS to present an overview of the stakeholder process and some of the policy recommendations on the topic. And I think we'll have some scrap staff also joining us here soon as well.
Thanks, Teddy.
It's Jen.
Hi. Thanks so much for having us. And Corey from RRS is actually doing the presenting today, so hand it over to you.
All right. Yes, thank you for having me. As stated, I'm Corey Ann Manziel. I'm a consultant with Resource Recycling Systems, and we've had the pleasure of working with HC3 for the past seven months, as well as working with stakeholders across Summit County to look at construction and demolition and what the opportunities there are to promote its recovery and reuse. Just quickly, who is RRS? So Resource Recycling Systems, we've been around for over 40 years, and it is an environmental consulting company. We have staff of, we have over 70 staff across the country and across the globe to certain degrees. But we also have about seven staff based in Colorado, including myself, that is predominantly working on Colorado-based initiatives and Colorado-based work. Some of those projects are in close partnership with Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment, but also with partners such as HC3. Our goal, our project goal, over the past several months, was to develop a recommendation for a policy framework to increase the recycling and recovery of CND waste in Summit County. And so, looking at the policies that exist across the country and seeing what might be viable and an opportunity for Summit. I'll be going through the project background and our goals, recognition of the work that's already been done and already underway in the, in the community. Then also the summary of the policy framework that could be of consideration based on that stakeholder engagement process, which I'll review shortly. And then time for questions, of course. So to transition to background, why are we talking about CND? So, construction and demolition debris. There's over 600 million tons generated annually in the US. And to hone in on Summit County, about 20,000 tons of CND material is going to scrap annually. So it's, there's definitely a huge opportunity there. And that's where we, that's a driver for the focus of looking at CND materials. And Summit County is not alone in looking at CND policies or CND drivers. So opportunities to reuse and recycle CND materials with over 125 municipalities adopting policies across the country, which was certainly a jumping off point for looking at what could work here. So as noted, 30% of Summit County's landfill encompasses CND materials. Already noted that that's a huge opportunity for diversion of materials from the landfill to look at more higher, more beneficial uses, including reuse and recycling. And then also, this is a natural progression of these policies that reduce waste. So the progression of waste reduction activities in the county, such as the communities that have adopted pay-as-you-throw programs. And then this is also a stated goal for five, the five-year construction and demolition plan, which identified multiple opportunities for increased diversion of these materials. Quickly noting, the goal of the, the five-year construction and demolition plan is a 40% diversion rate. And so, how do you get there? What are some of those key drivers to meeting that goal? And that is one of the, the sort of the impetus of this stakeholder engagement process to look at a potential policy framework. So what did the stakeholder engagement process include? And a little bit of a recap of the engagements to date. So with the engagements prior to our work, RRS and HC3, HC3 worked with Burt Sites to pilot a, an initiative with several contractors in the community and assess what worked well for them for the source separation of those materials that they generated. And I'll review a little bit more about that in a slide or two. We also had four Zero Waste Task Force meetings that was inviting input and contributions to what a framework could look like. Two steering committee meetings, a workshop for building professionals, a survey for building professionals, and a meeting to local government officials. So along that way, we were really trying to summarize what policies already exist, synthesize what was working well, and then also kind of summarize what, what could work here, as stated. The Zero Waste Task Force participants included, of course, HC3, Scrap, Burt Sites, as well as RRS staff, but also notably elected officials and town staff from all of the, from Breckenridge, Dylan Frisco, Silverthorn, as well as building professionals, waste and recycling haulers, businesses such as the ski resorts. And we really wanted to hear their, their input and ensure that we were listening and summarizing their, their thoughts. Burt Sites, as noted, conducted a pilot prior to December 2023. And here, with the pilot overview, the goal was to assess materials management and waste diversion challenges and opportunities at local CND project sites. They worked with several contractors and included multifamily as well as single-family residential projects. And this pilot was conducted from May to December of 2023. Overall, the pilot invited the building professionals to source separate materials onsite and to assess what could be recovered and could be sent for recycling. Notably, some challenges included the space for, for those materials to be source separated and then also recognizing, recognizing the recycling infrastructure that's available today. But the successes include the development and execution of construction, construction materials management plans, which I'll detail further in a bit, which is a short summary of what materials are generated onsite and where they could be sent for, for reuse or recovery. The overall engagement of those contractors was notably a success and, and their contributions to the effort, as well as additional source separation and diversion of materials that were generated, which of course is one of the larger goals. Recommendations that came from the pilot included a policy for locally divertable materials, which segued into the work that RRS is doing with HC3 to really understand what policy would, could work here, as well as looking further at the composition, a composition study at Scrap of what encompasses the CND material that is sent for disposal there. So the kind of percentages, the breakdown of materials, additional training and resources for those contractors to develop and make those construction materials management plans, and then the success of those, those plans, which were noted to be pretty readily available and easy enough to execute. Zero Waste Task Force meetings included setting the stage in December. So we didn't want to come in with any sort of idea of what is going to work or could work. We laid it out all on the table of, these are the policy levers. These are the policy drivers, policy options that have been implemented in communities across the country and which ones might resonate here based on, on your feedback. And then the, as we transitioned, we further honed in on those policy types because under each of those category of policy types, there's also nuances and thresholds and considerations within that. So that's where we started large and, and tried to hone in on, on those opportunities. And then we also presented to the elected officials and gathered input professionals along the way. So as I noted, we laid out all of the policy options as much as possible in that initial meeting, which included diversion plans, which I also reference as construction materials management plans. So sometimes those are used inter interchangeably, mandating or making certain materials mandatory for recycling or certain diversion targets. So such as setting a 35% target diversion rate, material disposal bans, which is mostly driven by a landfill banning certain materials at the landfill, incentives such as permitting relief, deposits, and then others such as job trainings. And I'll talk more about what we, we, we landed on for consideration. And here is a quick summary of builders, the survey input and the findings from the survey that was sent to the building professionals. We had over 70 respondents encompassing building professionals with varied project types. So new construction, commercial multifamily, demolition or deconstruction, commercial businesses, et cetera, as well as those that have a range of projects annually, from one to more than five. A little bit about the key findings. Notably, over 90% of the respondents are currently recycling. So we do want to recognize that those efforts are underway and that they are recycling today. Most commonly, the recycled materials are cardboard and scrap metal. But as noted in the pilot referenced earlier, and they are experiencing challenges with cost, transportation, and space in regards to the opportunity to recycle more. And more than 80% of the respondents agreed that increasing recycling and recovery of CND materials is important for Summit County. And then also that the, with, and then what we also asked about policy types. So referenced earlier, those six buckets, what could work? What will, what resonates for, for those builders? And here's a quick snapshot of, of the respondents and the preferences. So here you can see 87% recognized that it was fate. Over time, consistent across Summit County, provides considerations for project size and type and applies to demolition as well as new construction projects and remodels. So those were in larger part, majority of agreement. And ultimately, some policy recommendations we landed upon were some considerations, some overarching guidelines for that framework. First and foremost, maximize, the county and town staff should maximize diversion impact while avoiding unnecessary administrative burdens. And so that is something that we've heard from the communities that we interviewed in that process. So along the way with the stakeholder engagement process, both RRS teams spoke to communities that have policies already adopted and what worked for them and what worked well, and brought those findings back to the stakeholders and to the Zero Waste Task Force meeting. In addition, we had one meeting where we had a, a community speak about their experience around a policy implementation and what worked for them as well. So it wasn't just us summarizing those, those learnings as well. And then also aiming for consistency across ordinance requirements and reporting to simplify the process for builders. So one way to get there is looking at, let's say, a construction materials management plan and ensuring that it at least has some similar framework across, across the community to reduce, one, the administrative burden, as well as the, the onerous on the building professionals. Other ordinance considerations and kind of the, the, those policy summaries, the policy type summary is looking at construction materials management plans being a requirement to be submitted before applying for a permit, a policy that requires projects to divert certain CND materials designated in the ordinance, and then also looking at a phased approach for refundable deposit to increase compliance. And this potential framework would apply to residential and commercial projects across new construction remodels as well as demolition projects. And then there, of course, notably can be project size and exemptions to be determined by county or town staff as well. So that is, in short, a little bit of the summary, and then I'll go into more details right now. So construction materials management plan, here is a sample, one pager. As noted, materials that's listed for requirement, where are they hauling the material? And you can indicate if it's going to reuse outlet or if it's being self-hauled, the facility recycling the material or reusing the material, and then estimated volume or of, of material. And with this, this is one example of a PDF or Word document form, but there are also tools that are out there that communities have leveraged, such as Green Halo that helps with that tracking that is more digitized and could be easier across communities for, for ease attention. Looking at required materials. And so here, I'll start with the fact that, of course, when you're looking at materials that you're going to potentially require for recycling, you also want to pair that with existing infrastructure of what actually is available for recycle, to be recycled. And that is where an ordinance that focuses on materials recycle at scrap while remaining flexible to add new materials as opportunities arise is, is also important and was something that we heard from several communities as well of allowing for that flexibility as ideally, what we're all trying to do is increase the types of materials that can be, be recycled at our local processing facilities. At Scrap, they can currently recycle concrete, cardboard, scrap metal, clean wood, and single-stream recycling. And so looking at a policy that includes those materials would pair well with the existing infrastructure of what's actually feasible. And then also looking across all project types. And if the material is generated, whether it's at a new construction site, remodel, or a demolition, that they're all required to sort of separate and recycle those materials. And then deposits. So this is also a mechanism or a policy type that had, had come up several times throughout the Zero Waste Task Force meeting. And in here, one key component is looking at a phased approach. So not necessarily out of the gate, requiring a deposit, but looking at how we can have that onroads, that up ramp to policy implementation and implementing a deposit later on. That could vary depending on the project type and size. So depending on square footage of a new construction project versus a demolition project. Here, I will really emphasize that many of the communities that we spoke with recognize that when they did adopt a, a policy that did not include deposits, that they did not see a lot of compliance and compliance and the diversion impact that they were really looking for. And when they expanded upon that and later introduced deposits, they did see that increase in compliance and overall diversion. And with that goal in mind of increasing diversion, that's something to, to consider on, on how that can be executed. And here, with all of these statements, circling back to that earlier timeline, the last meeting of the Zero Waste Task Force included a consensus check where we had these statements that the, the, the Zero Waste Task Force members were able to vote on from strongly agree to neutral to strongly disagree. And these were the overall thematic statements that were aligned with the majority of, of the respondents, either agreeing or strongly agree or, or otherwise. And then we also, in our findings, summarized the, the comments and additional feedback that we received along the, the consensus check. So those, that's the summary of the, the framework that we summarized with that, this seven-month stakeholder engagement process and what we heard from both the policy, the communities that have adopted policies around CND across the country, as well as the feedback from the Zero Waste Task Force, as well as building professionals. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do people have quest, Jen, do you want to add anything?
I think just briefly, I would mention who's been involved from Breckenridge. Kelly, Kelly, Jesse Burley, and Hayden have attended all the meetings. In addition, last week, Jesse Burley, Aaron, who's the director of the Scrap, who I think walked in, and some HC3 staff and other Scrap staff went to Pittkin County last week. And we did, we were over there both to the day. We did a tour, we looked at their Green Halo software. They're having tremendous success over there. And I think we came back really encouraged from learning what Pittkin's doing. And we've, we've also involved Rick Felt and Mark Truckee and Matt Halsey in some of the discussions. So I think there's a lot of folks, staff-wise, who are well-educated on, on the policy. So I'd love to hear y'alls questions.
Great, thank you. So obviously, there's so much more information that we could talk about and lot, there's probably a million questions that could be asked. But I think our goal today is to get to a place where we're either supportive of or not supportive of staff moving forward with sort of creating an ordinance, looking at how county-wide we can start moving this forward. So if people have questions regarding that or at that level, let's do that.
And maybe starting there, Kelly, is that something where I know in the staff recommendation, you all talked about having the county take the lead? Would it be with support from our staff? And the details, the ordinance, draft ordinance would be drafted at the county level? Or what is the process?
Shannon, do you wanna?
So I would say, and I would definitely need Jesse to confirm this, that we would work in partnership with HC3 to determine how we should move forward, you know, and hear from them and what their expectations are. I haven't heard from Jesse what kind of feedback she's received from the county on this yet. And then we would draft our own ordinance. But you know, I think to the point in this, the slideshow, we would want all of the county to be on the same page when it comes to what our local regulations are. And does that help answer your question? Okay.
Any others?
I have a couple of questions to, just to kind of drill in a little bit more deeply, maybe. When we're talking about the materials and things that are going to be recycled, last meeting, we recognized that we're going to get more scrapes and more demolitions going on in town. Clearly, there's going to be a need to distinguish historic properties from just the run-of-the-mill scrape that we're having. And I think through the planning department, we've done a good job. And I see Lee Edwards out here. When we've got a historic property, we preserve anything that's historic. And it has a little different channel going forward. Would you see that kind of thing being recognized in any ordinances, plans?
For community examples, there are, there's one community in California, I believe it's San Antonio, Texas, also has a policies that incorporate like historic preservation and that sort of recognition of you're, you're not demoing the project, that you're deconstructing the materials that can go to reuse or recycling and preserving the, the structures that are integral, integral to the, the, the building itself. So there are policies that have those parameters that are recognizing where, where you want to preserve certain materials. And I think, you know, I, I think you're talking about keeping the, the, the materials in the building. But there's also, I want to note that if they're being sent for reuse or another building, that's also qualifies as being under a requirement, like using the material to the best and highest use.
Sometimes historic fabric doesn't go back into the building, but it could be used in another project.
Yeah.
Where it could be recycled now. What about fixtures? And when they're scraping these fixtures and there's sinks and toilets and bathtubs and big, heavy things like that, what happens to those?
So that wasn't included as a potential requirement based on the readily available markets that are available in Summit County. So we listed earlier what scrap is available to, able to recycle today. However, under a requirement that, and if you're setting a mandatory minimum or if you're saying bulky materials or those appliances should be sent for higher beneficial uses, that could be certainly noted and, and accepted because we love reuse.
Well, I think it's a great program. I think we should support it. And it's going to be coming more and more here as the scrapes and the remodels take place. So thanks for your presentation.
Are you guys, do you have a timeline in the back of your heads about when we might be aiming to be passing an ordinance or developing the next first phase of language or anything like that?
I think the short answer is that I don't think we got, I don't think we got timeline direction from the Board of County Commissioners this morning. We did this exact presentation, a little bit more time, a little bit greater discussion with the county commissioners. And I, they did ask us and county staff to continue to explore the policy and, and work with the builders. I think they had a few things they wanted us to really dig into, like whether deposits were the best way to go or incentives and then which types of projects. So I think they were looking for a greater level of detail. But I felt like we definitely got direction to continue to explore it. There was not, there was not a discussion about a timeline. Is that true? Okay. We were all there, but there was a lot going on. Okay.
I'd be really interested in getting the county to agree to some sort of timeline. I just think that this, there are, just even in our Zero Waste Task Force meetings with the four meetings, there were just so many questions and so many things that came up every single meeting. I think you could talk about this forever and never do anything. So I don't know how the town can help encourage some sort of a timeline to, at the county because I know that they really are the ones in the driver's seat. But I would like to do that.
I have a meeting with Eric on Thursday morning, so I can mention it to him as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Kelly, I think you bring up a really good point. How do you get something out there that's achievable from like a capital investment perspective for scrap? And then how is it something that like maybe impacts the tonnage that's going into the landfill? As well as like you get support from the construction committee and kind of get, get a little momentum there, like you said, rather than just talking about it. So something simple that's like, hey, everybody agrees we can do. I don't know what it is, whether it's plywood or, you know, concrete or asphalt or any of those to just like, hey, this is manageable and we can then kind of get that flywheel going. It'll be good.
All right. So how do people feel, supportive of staff continuing to move this forward?
Yeah, absolutely. At a high level, I think the policy direction makes sense. So much is going to come out of the specifics, the points that receive consensus, making sure there's consistency across the county. And the one thing that's not necessarily will be in an ordinance, but making sure whatever type of policy we enact, that there's plenty of resources, there's staff dedicated to helping builders navigate this because that'll be tough.
Yeah. Good point. All right. So it sounds like you have plenty of support from the council to continue moving this forward. And I would just like to thank you both. I was on that task force and RRS was a terrific leader. I mean, you guys really helped that group become very cohesive and get a lot of great ideas out. So thank you for your leadership and Jen, of course, with HC3.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
All right. Moving on to planning commission decisions. Everyone get through that packet? Lot of things going on in planning commission these days. Everyone good with planning commission?
Yeah, I just note, and Jay brought this up at the last meeting, they had a robust discussion of carrying positive and negative points out of master plans. So that's on the radar over there. And I think we So that's on the radar over there. And I think we can be assured they're taking a look at those things.
Yep, agreed. All right. Thank you. Um, we're going to go into legislative review, policy three amendment regarding density, second reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Cliff Cross, planner two for the record. This afternoon, I have the second reading of policy on three regarding the vestibules that we've previously, previously discussed as well as the density bonus for properties outside the conservation district. There's been no changes in the actual language. One thing I did want to follow up, I think Jay had the question last time of what classification it would be. We are going to handle these as D minors, but in instances where we do need to kind of reclassify it to go to planning commission. For any items, the director has the ability to do that.
Sounds great. Thanks for getting that clarification.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Cliff? Looks like we're ready.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The amendment to public parks section of the town code, first reading.
John started coming down during the presentation.
Coming early. Please take it slow. Yeah, you can stay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have an amendment to the parks section of the town code. This is just a basic cleanup. And when looking at this language, we had parks that didn't even exist yet, like Rotary Snowplow, um, River Park. And it's just how they are effectively managed by the Parks Department, Riverwalk Center, everything like that. So we're just cleaning up the code.
Sounds great. Any questions on this? I appreciated that you called out Prospect Park so that now I can instead of referring to it as Bear Park, call it its proper name.
Sounds great.
Thank you. All right. Into managers report, public projects update.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Kendra Hayne. I'm the senior engineer. I don't have anything additional to add to the memo, but I can take any questions on public projects.
Thanks Kendra.
Yeah.
Do we have questions?
How's the new fuel system working out?
I think they did testing and then it's supposed to start, um, soon. Are you going to give update on the fuel system? Okay, go ahead. But the fuel system, I think they were going to start fueling this week. And like, once the muddied tank is out, the email I got was that we'll be able to start feeling all the muddied cars too. So yeah, exciting.
And I just wanted to give a quick update on turf fields. The North Field looks like it'll be ready on July 15th. They have started demo of the fence on the South Field. So turf is on trucks and on the way. And so we'll see more than just grading and dirt starting soon. So.
Wow.
There are a lot of layers to that field, yes. Very cool.
A lot more than John and I thought. The grade came up significantly.
It did, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that posing any problems with anything else that's?
No. We'll get through it.
Every day it was a new truckload of a different material being dumped on there. I was like, wow. This is like, all right, you got me going, hey, what are you guys doing? What's that?
They're like, you don't need to know.
That's right. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. I think that's it. And mobility.
So if you haven't realized Teddy is running the show for Public Works. Today, um, some folks are out or Matt Halsey is very sick with probably COVID. So thanks Teddy for taking it all on.
Doing a great job.
And they're heavy hitters, so.
To have you.
Yeah, but for the mobility update, I have nothing to add beyond what's in the memo, but available if you have any questions.
Okay.
I was really intrigued by the, just the RTA discussion. And I think that it is, um, a lot of opportunity that is exciting for the town, for the cohesiveness throughout the county and, and even beyond to South Park even. So, um, I think that's, it's very exciting. It should be pursued or, you know, pursued the best we can.
Lot of work in the roaring for in Eagle County area. And they rave about their system going up and down their areas and connecting the towns and the little areas that develop around the towns. It's a big resource over there.
All good with the bikes?
Bikes are going great. Ridership is, uh, on a hockey stick curve going up. So we're, we're quite pleased.
It's a good.
How come it seems that the rec center is having bikes leave but not return?
We have not cracked that mystery just yet, but
Fascinating.
We, we can confirm that it is true and we see it in the data that, um, there's a lot more trip starts out of the rec center than trip ends. And so, um, people are taking one way to get there and then headed home on a, on a bus or on a bike. Yeah.
Can you tell where the bikes go?
We can't tell where they go when they're on their trip, but we can see where they start and, and, and their trips. Yeah.
The bikes ending up that leave the rec center.
Have to look. Yeah, that's a good, that's be a good way to dive into it.
Feedback, um, at the coffee talk, someone said that they had a new bike hub outside of their condo complex. And that they wished we had sort of talked to them a little bit more about that going in there and just let them know, give them a heads up that that's what that was. And then additionally, they were second homeowners who had a hard time getting a locals pass. And so I just thought that was something both for you guys to think about and all of us to think about is if we're putting hubs right outside of buildings that, um, are used by second homeowners. I think one of the things we've started talking about and certainly haven't gotten into very deeply is how do we sort of make those second homeowners feel like they're part of this community again, and that, you know, we, um, respect their contributions here. I think that we do need to continue to be aware of what we're doing and how it's perceived, whether we intend that or not.
Yeah. And they, they, they are, um, the parameters for the locals memberships are you have to live or work in Breck. And we, we do, you know, a homeowner showing that they own a home here, um, would qualify them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
But we'll try to clarify that a little more as well.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds like we're on the right track. Anything else for Teddy? So are you doing sustainability as well?
I'm gonna stick around for that.
For that, yeah.
Yeah. So on sustainability, again, uh, nothing really to add beyond what's in your memo, other than I did want to plug that tomorrow's Bike to Work Day. And, uh, the rec department is, um, facilitate facilitating our, uh, support station at Blue River Plaza from seven thirty to 10 AM. So they'll have some coffee and breakfast treats. So, um, would love to see as many people as possible riding their bike, uh, to work tomorrow.
Fun.
We are six days away from our plastic pollution, pollution plan, plastic pollution ordinance going into effect. I'm just curious if there's any last minute preparations that's necessary on messaging. Where I know that we have our, um, our, our app that we can use, uh, but, um, without that being fully broadcasted. Should we be taking a full page out on the summit daily of where our refill stations are, how to recycle the aluminum bottles? Or, uh, some of the things that are going to come up from this change of, um, change of behavior that we're, that we're looking to accomplish. Like I know that we're not, I know what we don't know until it happens, but I think there's a couple of things that we can foresee.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I mean, I know that we, staff has been doing some walkthroughs at businesses in town. You know, City Market is actually already, uh, in compliance ahead of the, the deadlines. So they don't have any, um, single use water bottles there other than.
Deli as well.
What's that?
Through deli as well.
At City Market, I need to check on that one. And then, uh, and then we are going to be continuing, um, to work with BTO and HC three on, on that other kind of public education campaign around, um, Breckenridge's water. It's safe. Here's, uh, where refill stations are and trying to make it easier for people to find that. And we'll be continuing that work, uh, through, through the July first, uh, date.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all your work on that.
Yeah.
And Teddy, with that, the first month or so, the priority is education, right?
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
That's great. And, um, the material management grants, are they still open?
Yes, they're, they are still open. Um, the ones you see in your memo are just actually some of the first ones. We, we had, um, a hard time giving the money away at first, and now they're, they're starting to, um, to trickle in. So, um, there's a few listed in there, but there's, um, there's still more money available and we would love to see more applications come through.
Great. Um, I've had a couple of businesses ask, could you or Eden or someone circulate the, where the information for the grant is?
Yes. Yep. Get that going.
That's great. All right. Anything else on sustainability? All right, Teddy, I think your job here is done. Thank you very much. Gonna jump right in. We have a housing update, Laurie?
There were some minutes in near Capitol. I didn't know if anybody had any questions on that. And then also, um, sort of under housing update, we had put the memo about the TLC. So I wanted to go over that with you all as well.
Great.
So any questions on the minutes first?
Nope.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. I just thought there was some interesting notes in the, in the, in the minutes about housing helps and where we think the light deed restriction is going and de- possibly decreasing the incentive on the deed restriction light. And I was just curious if, I was the only one that kind of thought that, um, with limited, limited data on what those, uh, houses with the light deed restriction are reselling for, which I don't know if there's any data on it. And thinking that they're not being effective at the moment and just kind of, um, where we are in that process. Are we looking to slash those incentives on the deed restriction light immediately? Or is that still up for discussion?
Well, I, um, you know, we are quickly going through the budget, um, for 24. Um, as a matter of fact, I think we are reaching the budget, um, already if we haven't. And so, um, yes, we were starting to, um, to sort of move forward with, um, you know, for the light deed restriction, we probably could only afford the 15% and not the 19%. And going forward, um, at this point in the year, not to say next year wouldn't be different, but yeah, the answer to your question is yes. After that meeting, we felt like the direction was to pay less for the light deed restriction. Since it, I mean, it is super valuable to have that unit restricted for workforce for sure. The concern was that, um, you know, it doesn't, very little to make sure the unit stays affordable. At least that's our initial reaction. And I think we see that with deed restriction lights a lot. Whether it's a housing helps deed restriction light or, um, you know, in other communities even where they have deed restriction lights that they just don't stay affordable unless you have that appreciation cap. So if affordability is a super high priority, then we need to push people towards the full deed restriction, but that's going to go through our fund quicker. So that was our conversation and would like your sort of input on that, whether that's a direction that makes sense, or, um, if you have any other ideas given we're so close to budget and a lot of demand still for housing helps. And, you know, with some of the programs coming online, I don't know if you're aware of the, you know, the HOA issues at some of our, um, older complexes where, um, there being, um, you know, some pretty hefty, um, assessments are coming down the pike. And we viewed that housing helps could help people get through those assessments. And, you know, to make our money go further, we're sort of thinking, well, we'll do housing helps and we'll do them at 15%. We'll get more people out there, um, that can participate in housing helps, get a deed restrictions, deed restriction light, but so would be interested in sort of the council's sort of reaction to the challenges with that budget.
I, I have opinions, but I'd love to hear those.
What do you got? I'm curious.
Oh. I think that we've seen, uh, time and time again in the housing performance that the deed restriction of housing helps and buy downs are by far the most affordable way of providing housing in this valley. And on top of it being affordable and the best, uh, way to provide workforce housing, it also adds zero density to this valley in new structures. I think the fact that we're hitting our budget before July should be seen as a good thing, that there is demand for it and should not be seen as a bad thing. I don't think this is a way of going, oh, shoot, we ran through it in five months. I guess we'll, uh, cut the incentives and try to decrease the interest. I think there will be years that there is peak demand. There will be years where it will, um, flatten out or decrease. But I, I just, I guess I haven't seen anything, and perhaps you can enlighten me, where the deed restriction lights are being unaffordable on the, on the resale. I just, I, I guess I, I'm missing that data because I don't know where it is, but it is still going to people that work here and it's keeping the people, the workforce that we have in this county to live and work here. And it just, it, it, I guess it really just, it troubled me in, in seeing that that we're not following through and putting this a higher priority for appropriations moving forward. And, um, and prioritizing existing structures, uh, for deed restriction of both, uh, new structures. So that, that's my opinion.
Yeah, no, I love the direction you're headed with that and to kind of dovetail or try to piggyback on that. Like, you know, we talk about the authenticity of Breckenridge and I think a lot of that can be protected by having, you know, existing homes continue to have workforce in them. So I think a higher investment in that. And again, I agree, like running out of that fund early is great, like good job. Like in, in addition to all the new construction, like I, I think that's a good thing. And in my mind, I start thinking about 10, 15, 20 years down the road and, and the amount of funding that it takes to have success here. And, you know, again, we've had tremendous success, especially compared to other communities, but I, I would love to see us invest more and find a way to invest more, especially in the housing helps piece. Because it is, it's quick, right? Like it's a, it's, it's a quick path to, um, it's quick. It doesn't add new density. It's a, it's a existing density in the community. So I'd love to see some modeling beyond kind of the 20, 30 range to think about, you know, I forget what the numbers are like, hey, we're at 27% now of our workforce is in the base. And then how do we get to that 47%? And, and, and I think housing helps is, is ultimately going to be that path. And then the other thing I wonder about, and I can't remember if it was 400 or 450 grand that was a part of that housing helps for the four bedroom, like kind of the question there in the notes is with housing helps, like per bedroom, if we're focused on smaller units like a Gold Camper or Valdezir and now Colorado, like that's a smaller chunk, right? Should we be in a, maybe that, I don't know that I want to open this can of worms, but should we pivot runway to some of those bigger homes, meaning like, should we make, just an idea here, right? Do we, or a question, do we make runway, single family homes? single family homes because our subsidy on new construction on those homes is less than a subsidy on a $2 million house. It's a four bedroom that we're trying to get a local into. Does that make sense?
So sure that'd be accurate, though.
Question is having some data on like, what's our subsidy on a three or four bedroom on runway? What's a subsidy for housing helps for a market rate house? And then where do we want to get to in like?
We can definitely bring that when we're talking about runway in July.
Yeah. So we're going to be back to second meeting in July with several questions relative to runway and where council's priorities are on that. And and maybe if there's time, we could give a little bit more examples. I don't think it's, you know, Lori and I have been talking about light versus the kind of the full deed restriction on our housing helps and that. And I don't really, I, I don't feel that the decision to kind of cut back on the light from 19 to 15% was based off of budget. But in my eyes, it's, it's more strategic based off of what are we really getting for a light and what's the value of it? And so when you look at the difference between a light and a full deed restriction, and if we're staying at 19 and then somewhere between 25 and 30 on the full, there's just not a big gap. Why would, I mean, somebody's going to take a light and we could show examples of where we might have helped somebody get a house for, you know, 800 to 900,000 on a light. And if they had a full, they're going to sell that, you know, three years later for less than a million and the house is trying to be sold for 1.3 million.
You bring up a really good.
Kind of like. So I, I, I just not sure the value is there on a light. I mean, I think we all fully support housing helps and what it's doing. To me, the question is, is it worth 19%? On a light.
I think you could do less and folks would still, there would still be uptake there, right? Cause there's, there's higher return potential. So maybe you could ratchet it down.
With them, I just don't think it's worth 19%.
Yeah, you could ratchet it down and still get.
That's what we wanted to do. We want to ratchet it down to, to more like 15% on a light and then, you know, and incentivize them. They're going to get significantly more that at 30% because we, we get affordability, a long-term affordability better with a full restriction and keep that, you know, closer to the 30. So I think to me, that's a great blend in there.
Yeah.
And so it's really, I mean, we all support this. We'll come back for appropriations if we need to do it. It, to me, it's just a light isn't worth 19% on what we're doing.
Totally agree. And I think to Jay's point, like, once it's deed restricted, it's got to sell to a local. So the market will, if, if that number's too high that they're asking, it'll, it'll, it'll settle where the market is that it's affordable.
And we're going to see that here quickly to see how that plays out, right? But, yeah.
I hate to make work for Lori, but it would be interesting to see some statistics, some data on resale, what's happening with these. How long are people holding their properties? When they resell, what's the benefit?
Okay.
I think that would be, and the light would be a big part of that for what we know.
I mean, long-term affordability is, is super important. And I think we've seen price creep throughout our inventory when we didn't have a good appreciation formula. He's thinking of how do we prevent that price creep and keep the inventory affordable? Because, you know, people are trying to sell for a lot and I think people are so desperate, they stretch and stretch and stretch. And they're paying more than they really should have to pay. So that's why I think the, the heavy the restriction is so important if we can afford those.
What do we have for, for income cap or for price cap between the light and 2%? Do we have like a 5% per year? Or, I mean, I know.
Our, 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 our heavy deed restriction for housing helps is 2% appreciation. You know, stables is 3%, but most of our neighborhoods, we've now got them to a fixed 2% a year. So they'll stay affordable. I mean, we've seen sort of, I, I, I'll definitely do some research. We've seen some, you know, deed restriction lights even over in Frisco, just to see kind of what those are selling for without the appreciation cap or with a real generous appreciation cap. Happy to bring that back to you. Thanks for bringing it up. It, it was a big discussion.
The other piece, just around budget that doesn't have as much to do with the, the housing helps piece is that we will be bringing appropriate mid-year appropriations to you at the July 9th meeting. And there are some heavy appropriations for housing. And some of that is timing of certain expenses falling to 2024 instead of 2025. There's an expense for stables that you've already approved, but it hasn't been appropriated already. And that, that's real dollars and it's, it's a lot. And so just, I think when we were talking with Jay on Monday, one of the things I mentioned is that as we come into the budget time, that'll be a good time for you all to talk about, you know, we can, we'll show you what the housing pro forma looks like and what's on the horizon. And then you all can make some decisions around where you, what bucket you want to put funding into. So although this is a really one, you know, housing helps and buy downs are, are really great programs, it would be probably beneficial for you all to see what the appropriations look like before, you know, deciding whether or not for 2024, you want to throw more money in those buckets.
Could we see some modeling on cost for say the stables units of like town subsidy there? I think that'll be helpful in informing where some of that housing helps piece should go. And as long as it's not too difficult to pull, that'd be great. Thank you.
And I guess we could bring this back on the 23rd of July when we're back with runway anyway.
Awesome.
Cool. Thanks. Well, speaking of money, on the childcare side of things, we, this is in regard to the Timberline Learning Center remodel that came out of the EUA study and a recommendation to increase capacity by doing a remodel off the rear and, and changing the multi-purpose room into a classroom. And, you know, originally back when we did the EUA study, the rough order of magnitude estimate for this was $500,000. When we did the request for proposals and got actual bids from contractors, that increased from 500,000 to 1.2. We didn't change the scope. It is just a real cost of doing the addition based on real numbers. And, you know, some change since they did the estimate back in '21. So a few years of increased construction costs. So this is being paid for out of the childcare fund. And as you might remember, there's a healthy fund balance in that fund. I think it, at the end of the year, it's about 7.5 million. That had assumed we only were spending 450 on TLC this year, but it also included a reserve of 5 million for the potential other center. So really we can accommodate this increase in budget within the fund balance at the end of the year without even digging into that $5 million reserve. And I think we are recommending that we move ahead with the project. We think we can increase capacity there by, you know, 10 to 20 kids pretty quickly. The sort of window for doing the project is fairly short. We have a contractor on board that is waiting for a signed contract and ready to roll and has talked to the center about, you know, working with parents, working with the center to do this construction without interrupting operations, which is a little bit complex. So wanted to let you know that that is a cost increase that we are, would like to move forward with.
Everybody supportive of that?
Yes. I, I am. I don't think the, I don't think it's going to get any cheaper to do. And it is part of our commitment to the childcare community of people that aren't needed the service. So.
On the capacity increase, is that something, do we know where that capacity is increasing? Is it in the infant?
Actually, I think, you know, TLC somewhat flexible, but I think at this point they are thinking toddlers with this per particular room. And they think it's a remodel of the multi-purpose room. I do think though, we are meeting with the other centers across the board to see, you know, does it make sense to do a minor or a remodel at Little Red, which could really go to the infants? So we're looking at a bunch of different smaller projects that might help increase the infants in particular.
Sounds like it is two and a half to three and a half year olds, but they are very certain that they already have those kids on the waitlist and that they'll be able to pull them right in. So even though it wasn't that infant identified need that we always talk about, they are, you know, they feel very clear that that need already exists in their community. So in, they've also spoken with the other centers and making sure that everybody's on board with that. And it sounded like they all agreed that yes, this is yet another space, place that we need more spaces. Feel like they can have a corresponding staff increase that matches the physical plant increase?
Exactly. Not easy, but yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Lori. And thanks, Rick. Okay. What do we have? Committee report? No. Open space update. Mark.
Good afternoon. So BOSAC had a meeting last week and I'll leave it up to Jay to give you the update on that later. I'm sure he has some good notes from that, but just a couple of things you all, I think Shannon forwarded you an email. We have selected our new open space and trails manager, Duke Barlow. Duke comes to us with 20 plus years of experience, supervisory experience, working with the ski area. And of course, as you know, he's been on the BOSAC for like the last eight years, serving as chair for many of those. So he has a lot of exposures to the open space issues as well. So we're really looking forward to Duke coming on board and leading the group and got a real strong team to work with him. So super excited about that.
They're a great team. Yeah.
And then secondly, we have selected our consultant to assist us with the signage work plan. And that is a company called Merge. They're, they're actually out of the state. They're from Pennsylvania. They'll be coming here numerous times through the process to guide us through, to meet with council, BOSAC, et cetera, and have regular communication, hold open houses, et cetera. We're really excited about them. They've got a great background. They did, they specialize in wayfinding only. They're very focused in what they do. So you know, in towns, on trail networks, et cetera. That's what their specialty is. And they've done signage plans for Whistler, Mammoth Lakes, for a couple of mountain communities. We got really great references from them. Our interview panel, which consisted of Jay and I, along with Alex and Tony from Open Space, were all just unanimous in that they were, they were, they were the ones to go with. So we're excited about that. So we'll be bringing them on. I believe they'll be coming possibly to meet with you guys in the second meeting in July. So, yeah, more to come on that.
So great.
Yeah. And that's, that's my update.
Lot of forward progress over there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I just will add, we did have great candidates for that position. I think everyone who was on the interview panel was really impressed with the folks that they interviewed. So just want to share that.
When will they be filling that vacant spot since Duke will be staff now instead of?
Actually, Mark and Julia talked with us about that today. So fairly soon, I think their plan is to bring you folks for interviews on August 13th. So they'll get it posted and give it a little bit of time and then get some candidates for you.
Thank you, Shannon. All right. Committee reports. We had a couple of Equity Commission meeting notes. Any questions on those? Financials? You have Dave? Uh oh. Don can start moseying down. And Tracy. Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I gotta put these on. I cannot see. Just a quick update on our financials, how we're tracking through the month of April, connect tax collections. We're above revenue 3.6 million, which is good on a year-to-date basis. That's really being carried by our sales tax and also our real estate transfer tax. So that's running 1.2 million ahead of last, last year from a year to, last year a million ahead and then 1.2 million versus budget. 490,000 of that is City Market that came through. So that's helping us there. Just looking at the trending, I would say, so we're about 1.78% below last year on a year-to-date perspective through April. One thing to really focus on, I would say on the trending, just looking at the month of April, we were running okay for the first three months on a year-to-date perspective. And April, we're down 8.88% overall. A big chunk of that is really coming through from our restaurant sector of almost 14% and then short-term lodging, which is 11% and grocery 17. So I always look at short-term lodging as our indicator. And just jumping back to the BTO report that we provide, you know, we are down 10% in room nights, occupied room nights from last year. For the month of April, May, it's down 11.5%. So I think we're seeing that trend continue. Looking at our average daily rate, April was down 15% from last year and May is down 12. And if you look versus 22, down 23% and 20% respectively. So I'm not concerned yet about how we're going to end up from a revenue. We're going to re kind of relook at the year based upon some of this trending. We're working on the budget right now for 25. But definitely, I, I would say just to keep our eye, Shannon mentioned some of the appropriations coming through that we're coming through next month and just trying to look and making sure we're balancing that out. So just here to answer any questions. This is the biggest drop we've seen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Did you want to add something or you have something after?
No, I was just going to go through with the global financial review for the month of May.
Okay. One second. I think Jay has a question.
I was just curious if you're, if you're getting a feeling on May and if that is following suit with April or more of like the first quarter?
I haven't looked at May yet, but I'm expecting that it's going to be, I mean, it'll be based upon what we see on the room nights. I expect a decrease in May. Yeah. But once again, looking at the volume, this is gross sales you're looking at. If you divide that or multiply that, that's two and a half percent. It's about a hundred grand. So it's not, you know, apples to apples from that perspective. It's just a trend we're looking at.
Okay, Tracy. Thanks.
So as we look at the global financials, which is for May close, hopefully you're enjoying the nice graphs in your packet now. It shows us trending favorable in revenue by just slightly over 4 million, primarily driven by sales tax accommodation tax. Investment income is up about $2 million to budget, which is already doing fantastically well. Ret, as Dave spoke about, is favorable, including that 490,000 from City Market or Kroger. We are still waiting on 3.6 million reimbursement for the, for utility fund. And that's part of the accounting entries that we're, the grant money from FEMA and the Colorado Water Board. We expect that to come through hopefully soon. Fingers crossed. We also have a little bit of favorability in stop-loss income and water rents that had the benefit of the 2024 rate increase. We are seeing about quarter of a million favorability to budget from that. As we look at expenditures through the end of May, we are running 10 million over budget. And as Shannon and Dave have spoken about, we will be coming to you with appropriations in the next few weeks to speak about. And as Shannon and Dave have spoken about, we will be coming to you with appropriations in the next few weeks to speak about those. Majority of it, 5 million is in the housing fund. We have some minor capital projects that we had purchase. That was part of the appropriation we've come for, the, the purchase of the, a shared property on Baldi. And then open space, the purchase of the Daisy Load and the Lizzie Load. But we do have a favorability in expenditures and that's in personnel of about 340,000. And that's primarily driven because of the vacancy rate that we do not consider that in our budget planning.
Okay. Any questions for Tracy?
Thank you, Tracy.
I do love your new graphs. Thank you very much. Dave. All right, events. John. That thing.
Yeah.
It's just hanging down.
She feels good on the angle. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just want to say on behalf of Race Breck, we're super grateful that you guys are supportive of the Firecracker 50, the Independence Day 10K, and then the Sparkler 50 Yarder. We're looking at probably 1,500 people between the three events coming here on the fourth. Kelly, I know you've been asked to lead the parade with, I think CJ is, is up for it. So big shoes to fill.
I know. I'm supposed to find some Mrs. Washington gear.
She could probably arrange that. She has a costume box for you. But thank you so much. It's definitely my favorite, favorite day of the year. A little different this year. I won't be up in the bucket truck. I don't think that's OSHA approved. But um, so in the memo before you, this is a bit of a weird summer month. And I don't want Breck Pride or 10 Mile Pride to get buried as well, because we won't talk about it till the end of July. But the town party was super well-attended. Just an awesome, awesome event. Every person that I talked to was just excited. We had beautiful weather. It could be, could be raining on June 15th, but it was really nice on June 4th. So really, thank you for letting that day switch, which moves, you know, Brett Create did a, did a fantastic job putting on that event. And then I got the play by Shannon. I know you were at 10 Mile Pride. And Maj and Sarah were sending me pictures as I was one day out of surgery, but it looked like incredible. Like, and I know Flor, you sent a, a nice email about it, but just an incredible event that was put on last weekend out there. And Lucy, just big kudos to your team out there. That was fantastic. Any other questions on the memo that you see in front of you?
Awesome. Thank you, BTO, for your support in that. Questions?
John, you know, we've talked a lot last year after 4th of July at the, specifically at the Restaurant Association. But I thought, I think TJ brought it to the Events Committee about giving people on the 4th of July something to do after the parade and before the concert starts at six or seven. Were we able to fill that gap this year?
I think there's some additional animation in the arts district. I don't know if there's a member, I saw Neil in here before. But they're, they're, they're trying to push that animation into, into the afternoon post, post-parade. Nothing concrete that I can speak of, but I can get you more information with that. And then we're going to increase our animation within Carter Park, but we want to keep people in town and around that entire day.
I love the town party. I think everyone loved the town party. The only feedback I got is when they walked up and every tent said Brett Create. They were like, oh, I thought I was going to get to explore all these nonprofits. And they did. There were different nonprofits in the tents, but the tent, because the tents all said Brett Create, I think there was just a little confusion about like, is this, is this another entity? Who am I volunteering with? Oh, I was expecting to see the library here or something. And they found the organizations they were looking for, but it was just.
So it's just better signage or better tent canopies?
Yeah. I mean, I get that Brett, great that Brett created, provided all of those tents. But yeah, maybe more signage up top about what nonprofit is associated with that. And it would have made it a little bit easier, but everyone loved it.
Great. Thank you. I don't want to steal Teddy's thunder because he's been on a roll sustainability, but I know, I think I walked out when you guys asked about the water filling stations last, or two weeks ago. So it's going to be put into the SEPA process and they're going to be rentable, super affordable, tiered, like tier zero is like 30 bucks or $20. You know, and a big event is only 100. So that knowledge is going to get out there to all event promoters. They're going to be used. You'll start seeing them around town. They're not going to be permanently outside because I worry about vandalism and, and getting things stolen. We're doing a whole walkthrough with, with marketing and we're going to put some nice signage on them. They're, they're TOB blue right now. They look nice, but these are just portable little, like the LK station you see when you're walking through Town Hall, but it's just a way to put it out. So you'll see one in Blue River Plaza. You'll see them during Oktoberfest. You'll see them at these events, the Breck Pride, you know, especially as we get to the plastics, we're six days away from that. But that is part of the SEPA process. The water department will hold them. They're currently in storage in the rec center. But I'm showing them how they work on Friday and then it'll be like part of the EFS. So you want these water filling stations for your birthday party? You know, here, here they are. So.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. Do you guys have any questions for John? So once he goes, he's done.
John, is it worth having the, that refill station? I know what you said about vandalism and the concern there, but if you walk down to the Riverwalk at any day during the summer, during July and August, there's thousands of people playing in the, in the river, playing in the, the little sandbox there, out on the lawn. Do you think we, i- is it worth reconsidering of having that out there so that it's very, I know we have water refill stations at the Welcome Center as well as the Riverwalk, but just so it's more visible and, and a less barriers to entry for the guests?
Yeah, definitely. So in our discussion, it'll be facilities, public works, rec and water and marketing. So we're going to meet on Friday morning. We talk about this. And I definitely agree with you. I think it's something that we can look at and maybe there is a location or a way that it won't get taken in the middle of the night because they're $10,000 for one of these. But, but I, I agree that we want them visible out there. And I can only be for, we can't have them out in the winter. I would worry about once we have, so we have a nice, I don't know, 110-day window right now. Probably of good temperatures.
Are we still having conversations about where we're going to put new refill stations, like the permanent kind?
I think we need an update from James on that.
Because I do wonder if there's a way to put something permanent in, you know, on the outside of the Welcome Center, like in the wall, but on the outside of the Welcome Center or something like that. So that people don't have to go down the stairs, only because it's just so busy in there. And it's really like a one-way stair.
Yep.
So taking the water users off of that seems like it'd be helpful. Maybe that's part of the.
Yeah, we can continue that discussion, but we've talked about putting an external one on a welcome center. So I'll bring it up with Laura Lynch and see if that's a possibility that could run seasonally. Be great. Because that'd be a more permanent, like what you're talking about, just on the outside of a wall. It's attached to a building and it might, it probably would not be operational in the wintertime, but it could be in the summer. So.
And I think they did that at the bathrooms at Prospector. So I think there's some options for how we might be able to do that.
Yeah, we have that at the bathroom at the rec center too. All right.
Here. No, I know you guys just asked that question about childcare, Carol, and I, I just didn't want to scream from the back and Lori will agree with this. So that toddler age, it's not quite two and a half to three and a half, but 18 months to three is actually higher on ECO's waitlist right now. So that will help alleviate that. It's higher than infants currently in their data. So it's all good news. And you'll probably get more childcare updates from me in the future.
Thanks, John.
Little hint.
I did just send you all the link to the BCA animation event, events for the 4th of July. So you can take a look at that. And I think they have quite a lot planned. Tamara will be here tonight to just give a five-minute overview of BC, all things BCA. And I'm guessing she'll probably mention some of those as well.
Great. All right. I think we're going to take a five-minute break. Sorry with everyone. I know. Sorry. Pretty sure what's going on.
I understand it. Good discipline. It's amazing.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Flor Cruz, bilingual community outreach and engagement liaison. Sorry, my title is quite long. As you've read on the memo, the Barker and Hage social equity advisory commission would like to recommend Ujala Vatas for the open vacancy that occurred in April. The commission advertised the vacancy through several channels, received nine applications, interviewed three individuals, all who were wonderful. And after a thoughtful analysis, the commission feels like Ujala will bring a unique perspective and make great addition contributions to our group. So do you guys have any questions or anything else I can?
Thank you so much, Flor. Carol, do you want to add anything or?
I just want to highlight what a great job Flor and Brooke and team have done soliciting applicants. This is the fifth or sixth round. I didn't know how many times we saw applicants, but it's consistently a high level of really wonderful community members applying. And that is due to the added outreach and really thoughtful ways to reach people. So thank you, Flor and Brooke.
Great. All right. So we'll be ready to make the motion for Ujala tonight? Yes? Okay. All right. Thank you, Flor. All right, the Core FB increase, Helen. Yeah.
Very hard.
Mayor and Council, as noted in the memo, Cora, which is Colorado Open Records Act, allows us to adopt our own rules related to the act. And as part of that, we always have an exhibit A, which is the fee sheet. We have not updated our research and retrieval fees for at least 10 years, as I could find. And the state just approved effective July 1st, an update to the research and retrieval fee to a maximum of $41.37 an hour. So I'm proposing raising our research and retrieval fees from $25 to 41. Didn't want to have to handle the change, so we're going to go with an even number. And I think it's well warranted, given that it's been so long since we've updated our rates. And we do get, as Kirsten can attest, a lot of Cora. Not, you know, not anything like a big city would get, but we do have enough Cora to warrant, Cora requests to warrant this increase.
Great. Thank you, Helen. I certainly support it. Everyone?
Helen, would this be applicable if, if there was a core request that was really simple, that was a piece of paper that was on your desk? Would we be charging for that?
So the first, the first hour is free and delivery is free as long as it's electronic. So, you know, the majority of our requests really don't have any cost. It's the ones that take lots of staff time. And so anything over an hour would be recorded at $41 an hour. And to be perfectly honest, a lot of those come from attorneys, like law firms. And, you know, the cost is maybe not such an issue for those firms and it takes us a lot of time.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, Planning Matters, Town Own Density Analysis. This is a great memo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really interesting.
Yes. As, as we talked about, I got to update you guys a few meetings ago. With our obligations with the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan, we do move density to all workforce housing projects, at least that the town initiates. We also, if there's a private project, they can request and it's up to the council's discretion, whether we transfer density to those to assist with that or not, but we haven't ever done that on a couple occasions. So anyway, the table here show, well, backing off, I, I attached a table that gives the amount of density we have. There's about 340 units. If you look at, there's two columns. It gets confusing. I would just say, look at the residential column, in terms of residential density. There's about 340 units of density that we hold on existing properties that the town owns. We've already used over 200 units of density in the last, you know, half dozen to eight years, providing density to some of the workforce projects that we've done. Now that's a different density ratio, transfer ratios, which I'll explain in a minute. But anyway, bottom line is with the 340 units, we could accommodate the projected upcoming projects in terms of providing density to them at a one-to-one ratio. And those include in the table here, Stables Village, which I'll be coming to you shortly with the Sunset, NC Sunset Covenant for that, along with then Runway. Public Works is the other one. And then we came up with, Lori and I talked about this miscellaneous projects. We know there's a few of them out there, like maybe redevelopment of the Wayside Lodge project. Gateway is a possibility. That's up the old DNR kennels property. So there's a few of those. So even considering maybe there's another 100 units there in other redevelopment opportunities. We have enough density to about cover what's there, which is about 312 unit SFEs. Now, that's going to vary. The 100 units like at Runway may not end up being 100 SFEs because there's a multiplier there. It depends what type of units we develop. So it may end up being a smaller number that we end up doing at Runway, even though it may be 100 units, for example. But anyway, I know that was part of the, the council wanted to kind of see that in terms of, do we have enough density to accommodate that? Understanding there may be some occasion where you want to provide density for other things as well. But beyond that, wanted to talk about the jump policies a little bit. We're obligated per the jump, and that's on page two of my memo, to actually transfer density at a one-to-four ratio to projects. So for every four housing units that are developed, we need to transfer one of them. And that's our obligation via jump. And the council at the time had, was kind of split in two camps in terms of that. One camp was, density is a very important, valuable thing that the town should hold on to. And so we shouldn't be transferring it all to these housing projects. Because if you remember, prior to 2011, when we updated the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan, density wasn't required for workforce housing. You could just build it and there wasn't a requirement to transfer it there. But because of the concern about activity levels in the basin and just more things happening as a result of that actual density being built, there was another camp in, in council at the time that was like, we need to transfer density to accommodate that. We can't just allow density to just keep ratcheting up. Because the, you know, the Joint Upper Blue envisioned that there was some finite amount of density that we could handle. So, so that was the compromise that was reached at the time was a one-to-four. Subsequent to that, with some changes in council members in that, we got down to one-to-two and then eventually one-to-one a few years ago. And that's what's actually embedded in our development code right now. And that's the other provision that I highlight here that actually says we will transfer density at a one-to-one ratio. So even though the jump and our obligations with, you know, in terms of being good partners with the town of Blue River and Summit County are at a one-to-four, we only, we've decided to go beyond that and say one-to-one. So it's not inconceivable if we wanted to in the future, if it was a council's desire that you could change that ratio again, just to complicate things a little more. But anyway.
That's.
That's an overview. I'm glad to answer questions. I know it's just last time when we talked about transferring density to our last project, which was, I think, may, maybe out at, oh, it was Vista Verde Two, that you wanted to see this analysis. So I'm glad to answer any questions you might have about it. Yeah.
You forgot anything?
I'm curious if we know how many units we've kind of given up through the shift from the one-to-four to the one-to-two to the one-to-one. And I imagine that would take some time to kind of look at, right? Of like over that time. And I'm, I imagine that would take some time to kind of look at, right? Of like over that time. Um and I'm curious if there's like a clawback ability there. And not that I'm, and I think, right, there's a a delicate harmony here in our community of the carrying capacity of the basin and being really thoughtful there. But also how much commuter traffic do we want? Are we really trying to get to that forty percent of our employees living in the basin? And then just having kind of, I think, freedom for future councils, you know, the, the capital that Lori's got lined up for projects. I think we've got, you know, projects lined up for the next 10 years, which is great. Um but yeah, I worry about, yeah, running out of density and, and down the road being like, ah, that might have been a mistake.
So Todd, just to clarify, are you looking at, looking for um like what we've used for density at the one to one? What we would have used less if we were at one to two and what we would have used less if we were at one to four?
Yeah, and same thing in that cycle when we were at one to two, right? So when the shift.
From one to four to one to two.
Yeah, same thing there, right? It's like what, how much? You know, to me, that's, that, that's just workforce housing in the bank that we could have had, right? You know, and, and you probably don't choose to spend all of that, but.
We can, we, that's, that's not too difficult to run that analysis, but I would just wild guess would be um we've used up two hundred units of density. If we had done it all to one to one, it'd probably be more like three hundred and fifty or four hundred units. But we'll bring, bring that back to you.
But I mean, we can change this density calculation, A, at any time, and B, even by project by project, right?
You, well, you're, we're obligated to go one to one, so you'd, that's what the code says. So I, I would think you'd want to abide by that. So if you wanted to change the code, then you could do that. So maybe not project by project, um Kelly. And the only other thing I would say is, if you do decide to change it, you do understand that there's a former council member who will be letting you know his disagreement with that. That's fine, but just, yeah.
So we'll have to just take a look at the code a little bit because I think there's a provision in here that does say there's some discretion. So maybe we could just take a look at that. And then when we come back, again, we can talk about it some more.
Yeah, we can look at that.
And I'm only asking because I worry about the businesses in the, in the base that haven't enough workers and us having enough workforce housing. And I'd much rather have them live in our community rather than drive from an hour away. And, and if we're giving up this density, it's like we've given away this ability to house people in our community across the whole price spectrum.
Yeah, it was definitely a huge point of discussion, probably the biggest point of discussion in the whole update to the plan back in two thousand and eleven, was we continue to provide it for free so that we incentivize that. And finally, it was like, well, we're not, let's not try to ding people for doing the right thing. So at, at least at first, we committed to providing density for all, if a private partner came in. So yeah, we'll be happy to provide the density. The town has a density. We're not gonna make you spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to acquire it. We'll assist you. But after a while, to Shannon's point, um the council said, we're gonna do this at our discretion. So it's not gonna be, we're not gonna commit to providing to every private developer that, that kind of density.
And Mark, just to clarify, if we were to change, not saying that I want to go in that direction, but the max would be in accordance with the jump, so one to four or four to one?
Right.
Is how, what, how we could go?
Yeah, I mean, to be consistent with our partners, yeah, one, one to four. Um the county, the county committed to one to two.
Yeah. Um and this chart is super helpful just to see moving forward that we have enough density. Um just to make sure I understood Todd's point and to clarify that. I mean, with our existing projects, it was in our density ratio that was limiting it. It was land, it was cost, it was what fit in the space. So up to this date, would you say that density calculator has limited any of our affordable housing projects? Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm worried more about like future capacity. And then I think about like, what if a, a council down the road is like, you know what? We need a, we, we need a, and not that I'm opposing this at all, but you know, we need a, a a unique hotel somewhere. We, we need density for some future use, like, do we want to burn through all our density? Or do we want to leave some in the bank?
Yeah.
What other alternatives if uh we extinguish what is in the bank through workforce housing projects? Is there any other uh source of density? Um i.e. the back, back country or uh any other sending sites?
That's a great question, Jay. We do hold uh density in the back country. We hold it jointly with the county. So that would have to be a kind of a joint decision to, right now, we utilize that just for um the typical TDR transfers where someone like Mike Dudeit comes in and says, I'd like to upzone this area and I'm willing to buy X amount of TDRs from the bank. And so that's how we've used it in the past. We haven't used it for the workforce housing projects. So that would take a, you know, maybe a change to the intergovernmental agreement we have with the county probably, but that's a possibility. Um the other thing that's out there and it's, it, it's, it's nothing I'm like recommending, but um communities do create density basically out of thin air, and they're, they're able to do that. We're one of the communities that it was decided we're limiting it. And it's because of Todd's point, the carrying capacity of the basin. I mean, how much can we accommodate here? And um so that's your other option, that you could go down that road. That's inconsistent with the Joint Upper Blue Plan and how it's written right now. But you could open that back up and have those dialogues with the county at some point in the future.
Well, it's a really interesting discussion just because, you know, you look at the merits of workforce housing and um, and trying to encourage that and how that butts up against the fact that workforce housing is possibly the most intensive use of any, of any of the density that we use uh versus a second home versus a, you know, anything. These are people that are living um and using that every single day. And so you kind of have that push and pull there. And so it makes for an interesting discussion, and I appreciate the, the memo.
Mark, you may know this off the top of your head, but do you know how many units of density are being held in the back country fund?
Yeah. Not off the top of the head. It's, it's, it's hundreds. I know, for example, that we have not even tapped into B and B, and that was eighteen hundred acres. So that's about ninety some units right there um of density, based on our, our calculators. Um there's several hundred units.
You do know like which properties anything comes from. Maybe when you come up with uh data for Todd, you could just say, here's the current number of back country density units that we would have an interest in.
Okay, I can take a look at that.
Thanks, Mark. To me, it's just like a piggy bank of options there. But maybe, maybe we burn through all our density and that's the way we want to go. And it's, then pushes us to more housing helps and then reduces the load in the, in the valley. So not sure what the right answer is, but just thinking out loud.
What's the multiplier, Mark?
So um i- if you're, like for uh let's say Vista Verde. It's uh one unit equals twelve hundred square feet.
Okay.
So they get a, a bonus there, so to speak. So it doesn't end up being a whole, yeah. Yeah, that's how it works. Commercial was, is one unit equals a thousand square feet. Single family is unlimited in some areas of town. Um and then we have a couple other multipliers as well. Duplexes, sixteen hundred square feet, some parts of town, it varies.
Okay.
So it really depends on the type of unit. And we even have a bonus for hotels. A true hotel is, has a multiplier of thirteen hundred and eighty square feet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any chances of revisiting our wiggle room when we get to talking more about redevelopment as opposed to new development? Like, uh, I can't think of a great example right now, but like, obviously the Wayside was a motel. We're gonna possibly, you know, convert that. It, does that factor in here at all? I'm assuming this was created based on new.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, actually, Marika, um because I think the way we would treat it, the way we would treat it, is the existing density there, that's there, we wouldn't, even though it's scraped, we'd still recognize it. So it's, to the only, it's just to the extent that they increase, you were to increase density on a redevelopment site, that we would require the additional density.
Okay, so we would still have to have something in the bank if we were going to increase density.
Right.
On a redevelopment.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. So any other questions or more information that we're looking for from Mark on the density analysis?
I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you so much for doing this.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Truly eye opening. All right. Okay, so just so that everyone who's here is aware, we're gonna go into, we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're just gonna go ahead and go into our executive session. And then we'll come out of executive session and I'll close the meeting. And then we will go into our Housing Authority Annual Meeting. So now you know what we're doing, if you want to come back and participate.
These are really good. They're great.
Yeah, usually it's a wonderful.
Kirsten, one, should I me, read this right now while everyone's leaving?
Options in.
Okay, okay. I move that the town council go into executive session under CRS twenty four six four oh two four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategies for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators concerning a lot in the Coronet subdivision of the town may be interested in acquiring for open space. Uh, okay. Can I have a second? Carol? Great. Um council member Sade?
Yes.
Council member Rankin?
Yes.
Council member Page?
Yes.
Council member Gerard?
Yes.
Council member Beckerman?
Yep.
Uh Mayor Protem Carlton absent. Mayor Owens, yes. Do I just go, do I need to go right now? Okay. I move that the town council go into executive session under CRS twenty four six four oh two four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators concerning a lot in the Aspen Springs PUD. The town may be interested in acquiring for open space. This, thank you, Carol. Uh, this doesn't have voting space. Should I vote anyway? Okay. Um council member Sade?
Yes.
Council member Rankin?
Yes.
Council member Page?
Yes.
Council member Gerard?
Yes.
Council member Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem um Carlton absent. Mayor Owens, yes. All right. And motion three, I move that the town council go into executive session under CRS twenty four six four oh two four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to the negoti- to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators concerning a licensing agreement with the Public Service Company of Colorado, doing business as Excel Energy, Inc. for potential installation of a gas utility line on town property.
Second.
Council member Sade?
Yes.
Council member Rankin?
Yes.
Council member Page?
Yes.
Council member Gerard?
Yes.
Council member Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Carlton absent. Mayor Owens, yes.
All right.
All right. And you stopped that? Okay. The town council has discussed in executive session whether to direct the manager to negotiate the acquisition of two properties for potential open space purposes under certain parameters that are confidential for purpose of negotiations. For sake of transparency, any final decision as to whether to enter into and execute final agreements on the acquisition of those properties is the authority of the manager. The town council has discussed in executive session whether to direct the manager to negotiate a license agreement with the Public Service Company, doing business as Excel for the installation of a gas utility under certain parameters that are confidential for purposes of negotiation. Any final decision as to whether to enter into the, and execute a final agreement with Excel is the authority of the manager. All right. Executive session is closed. We don't have a vote because of what we just talked about. We didn't make any decisions. Now, I am going to close the work session for June twenty fifth. And we are going to open up the Breckenridge Housing Authority Annual Meeting. Okay, we're just gonna wait one second. You good? Okay. All right, I'm gonna call to order um the Town Council of Breckenridge Housing Authority meeting for June twenty fifth. I'm gonna do a roll call. I'm going to start with um council member Sade.
Yes, well, I can do.
Oh, you're doing, Carol, great. Helen's gonna do it.
Um Todd Rankin.
Here.
Notice.
Start with someone else.
Let's go backwards. Steve Gerard.
Here.
Marika Page.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Then, absent. Todd Rankin.
Here.
The other.
Let's just keep going.
Kelly Owens, Chair.
Here. Thank you. All right, um approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda, Lori?
No.
Okay, approval of the minutes, motion to approve the March fourteenth, twenty twenty three minutes, which I'm sure you guys all remember very clearly. Yeah.
So moved.
The minutes have been approved for March fourteenth. Miscellaneous business. We had a staff memo. Yeah. Go ahead and take it away.
Sure. Um the Housing Authority has not been very busy since our last annual meeting. Um, you know, as, as you recall, it sort of ebbs and flows. And um you all had very busy meetings back when we were developing um Pinewood two and um Blue Fifty two. Um but since then, um it's been pretty slow in terms of any new activity other than the um bonds that were issued by the Housing Authority for the construction of um Alta Verde, now known as Vista Verde. One of those has been paid off because they converted to their permanent financing. Um so the second one that you all approved, I think down, back in twenty twenty two, is still in place, but will be paid off when they um convert that project to permanent financing after the construction's done. Um so that's basically all of the ongoing activity at this time for the Housing Authority. Um but I would ask, as I ask every year, um that you make a motion um to approve all of the actions of the officers, employees, and agents of the town um taken since the last annual meeting, and the language is written in the um you could use that and just adopt that motion. That would be fantastic.
Okay, thanks Lori. Do any, does anyone have any questions for Lori? Ready to make this motion?
I'll make it. Um I move that we approve all the actions of the officers, employees, and agents of the Town of Breckenridge Housing Authority taking place since the last annual meeting of the authority on March twelfth, twenty twenty three um are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed.
Second.
Great. Do we do a roll call on that?
We have not traditionally done a roll call. It's just been a verbal, all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Um any other? Just other.
No, nope, no other, other.
All right, then the meeting of the um Town of Breckenridge Housing Authority for Tuesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, is closed. Thank you very much, Lori.
Thank you.
Uh Jaren, we're done?
Do we do committee reports?
Wish we had. Is there any chance we could open the work session again?
What, no.
Reports?
Oh, sure. I think that's fine.
You have some time. Great, let's do it. And we'll, we'll do a record. Thank you, Lori. That was a great. That was a great meeting. Um, all right, we are going to open up the work session for Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. We're just gonna open it up to do a few more things since we got through our other matters pretty quickly, um, the Housing Authority. We are going to. Go into, how about report of town manager and staff?
Um, so I really don't have much for you today, I did want to let you know, um, and we'll keep reminding you. On July 23rd. We will have a site visit to Stables, I think some of you remembered it was on the.
I was gonna go to today.
The agenda for today, but they needed to move it, so we'll probably start that meeting at two. And we're actually gonna do two things and we'll, um, work on arranging some transportation, but we'll go to Stables and do a site visit there. And then we'd like to take you out to the McCain property. Um, and Rick is going to flag out where we would like to put parking. Or proposing to put parking, so you guys can actually see where. Where we're proposing that it will be, and then that way when we come back and you have your runway. Discussion, um, you'll have a visual for where we're proposing the parking to be. Um, and I think that's all I have for you.
Shannon, as part of that site visit, can we always also drive? The route down Airport Road into the current free parking and how that would be sort of laid out? In comparison to that neighborhood that's gonna, that would be there?
Yep, we can do that.
Wonderful, and is there gonna be any, another public open house at Stables, I've had some questions.
Um, I would have to ask Lori, I don't know if there's gonna be another one, so we'll find out.
All right, so is that it?
For me?
Yeah. That was easy, okay. Um, report of mayor and council members, CAST MMC, we haven't had. Since. Reported, Scott and I reported out on the last one. But, and we have.
There's not, we had CML, there's not another CAST meeting until August.
Right, okay. Okay. BRECC Open Space.
Hey, that's me. Uh, I don't have anything.
I know you're gonna have.
Just kidding, I do. There are minutes in the packet, um. Couple things I did wanna call out is, you know, first off, the company that we selected for the signage plan, they are. Mark did a great job, uh, doing it, but they are awesome, and we are so excited to work with them, they really connected. Um, they're excited to come out and present in front of you all. And talk about what their methodology is to, they're, they can't wait to. Travel to the trailheads, they can't wait to do, to have a couple of. Uh, hikes and, um, trails explored. And, uh, they're really, not only do they. Do sign package, but they actually have high implementation rates, right, where, you know, it's great if you find someone that will give you a nice plan, but if it doesn't get implemented, it just sits on a shelf. It doesn't really do anyone any good, they, they actually go out and make sure that the materials they are specking. Um, are, are within our budget and our, our capabilities, if we choose to go that way of looking at having Public Works fabricate some of these. Uh, they'll work with, uh, that group or they'll work with a, uh, you know, our, our fabricator of choice to make sure that. Uh, the stuff they're presenting actually, um, is workable, so I, I just, I just thought that's really cool, they, they. They really specialize in decluttering and taking, you know, they, they actually have the before and after pictures, which is kinda cool and, you know, like. Situations that they've taken where there's just signage, all sorts of different, uh, disjunctive signage and then, then what the after would look like. Uh, they talked a lot about major decision points versus secondary decision points, which I thought spoke really highly to what we're doing. Anyway, uh, yeah, and it was unanimous, there was, there was no doubt that they were, um, this is what they do for a living, so I thought that was really cool. Um, other than that, we did, uh, have a presentation by Summit County Safe Passages. Uh, they're looking to finish their funding on, uh, the. Um, feasibility or the, uh, not the feasibility, but the planning of safe passages on the east side of Bale Pass. Uh, they're looking to do or to have a plan for two underpasses and one overpass. Uh, they talk about, um, just how important that is to not only the wildlife itself, of giving them a path. Uh, across, but of the veh- vehicular, uh, accidents and the number of, uh, crashes and, uh, human life that's lost. Um. And, and they, they, they stated a number which was really impressive, that these under and overpasses, these crossings have a, a 92% reduction. Efficiency and, 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 uh, human versus animal collisions. Um. And so, yeah, so I just thought that was, it, it's really interesting, it, it's a, it's a big project, it's a, it's maybe a heavy lift, it's wicked expensive, but, um. You know, I think that, uh. If there is an appetite of. You know, i- it's really not our responsibility, the Town of BRECC or Open Space, but if the other towns in, in the. In the county and the county wanna go in, I think Open Space would be supportive. Uh, perhaps, uh, if there was a, you know, a togetherness there and us going in, so we'll see where that goes and. Uh, so they're looking to finish that up, they're 90% of the way there on the plan. Uh, the other thing that we talked about was the Volt Base Center and, uh, kind of trailhead management and guidance, and we were presented with. Kind of a matrix of the different. Um. The different trailheads and what may make them more. Um. More usable and more friendly and better stewardship. Um, there was, there was some good questions that were taken, there, there's some work to be done on that still. For sure, but it was a nice start to see the layout and some of those trailheads identified. Um. BRECCOST.com is live, this is the Breckenridge Open Space App, or not app, uh, website. Um, that will have updated trail, um, conditions, uh, what trails are closed, um, events. Uh, and, and more to come, so, uh, these guys, especially Alex's, worked really, really hard in getting this up and running and. He's pretty proud of it and I think it's, it's, it's great and, uh, you know, we recommend that, uh, they work with. Um, BTO to get that linked in on their app. Um, and that's.
Will the committee opening be posted on that website? Dukes?
No, I think that will go on the town, like, it, that'll go on the exact, uh, under the Advisory Committee openings.
And also get sent the paper.
Pretty robust. Push for those positions.
Website's also mobile optimized.
Great. I like this company, I just am poking around on their website, it's very cool, Merge.
Merge? I asked them, what, one of my questions for them was, what was the story behind that, and he said that we need to take them out for beers to learn that. So we'll find out.
Included in the RFP.
BRECC Tourism Office.
They did just have a meeting, they, they had, um, I know Dick's on it, but they, they do, Lucy was really excited about two new board of directors that they're adding, and I did not write down who they are. Uh, Steve West?
Tim West.
Tim West.
Yeah, the fishing guy.
Oh, that's great. Yeah.
He's awesome.
And they have their annual meeting, right?
Yeah, we did, we went to their annual meeting. All right, well, maybe we'll get a little more information some.
I think, uh, sorry, but Lucy's doing update tonight.
Meeting in mid-July, talk to you then.
Okay. Creative Arts?
Thursday and a nice attendance, uh, at the mayor's meeting at the new art exhibit.
Oh man, yeah, they did do a great job, but that art exhibit also is really cool. And I will say, um, they had great, it was very amazing, the artist was so open to having any community member come. And they let kids, um, my son did it.
Oh, installing the?
Yeah, working on it, it was really fun, it was a great community involvement, it was just like really nice way to. Kick off the summer, I was very impressed. CML?
We went to a meeting last week, um, they had their annual conference in Loveland. Um, so that's always helpful to touch base with other municipalities, see what they're dealing with, um, the. Big thing, I mean, CML's so valuable for lobbying for local rights, so, um, one of the most valuable. Sessions was the legislative update where they talked about what new laws were enacted at the steakhouse. What we'll have to update, deal with, and what they were able to kill or reduce the impact to local government, so I know we're working on a. Memo and, um, we'll see the new laws really impacting the town.
Great, did you get any sneak peeks on? Stuff that we, that wasn't already on our radar?
Hmm, I don't think there was anything that was super surprising in there. And the one thing I'll just add for everyone is it, it is really geared for electeds. Um, so, and next year it's gonna be in Breckenridge, so that'll make it super easy for everyone to at least attend part of it, but I, there is, um, I think great learning opportunities. Um, especially for folks who haven't, you know, been in this environment, so. And it's nice to hear stories from other communities because. There's a lot of things going on in other communities and aren't happening here and it's. It's kinda nice.
True. All right, social equity?
That must have had a lot. Yes, um, you could see from the minutes in the packet, it's pretty robust. Um, I think the one thing worth highlighting is, um, just how much the commission has done. I mean, Floor has been an incredible addition, that's really strategically moving some of the goals of the commissions forward and how. Um, how it's structured, how they're meeting, how we're partnering with other organizations, so. Um. Really a lot of great things coming out of the, out of that commission, um, Ujala's gonna be a great addition, not just the. Um. Firm grasp of equity that she brings to the commission, she also has a strategic management background. And although she's been in the community for years, one thing that stood out in her interview was her experience as a newcomer, that I think will play in. Well with this new welcoming initiative that we'll start focusing on.
That's great. She has a totally new perspective, that's. Exciting. Okay. Maybe no? Okay. Arts and Cultural Master Plan.
Hey, that's me. Um, we did our interviews of consultants, uh, yesterday, we had, uh. Out of the 12 applications, we got our responses to our RFP. Uh, um, Tamara and Julia, uh, selected five that were, uh, vetted and, and the rest of the steering committee and the interview. Uh, group, um, agreed on those five and we went through those interviews yesterday. Um. There was. A lot, a very diverse amount of, um. Of plans, like the, none of the plans were the same, they were, you know, and, and we kinda knew that was coming up, like, you know, with that, with that Trails RFP, we were like, hey, this is what we need, it's very narrow scope, you know, sniper rifle. This one was a little bit more, you know, uh, squishy, if you will, and so, um, it was really interesting to see. All these different consultants take a different take on what our RFP was, and, uh, the. See, we had, I'm missing somebody, but I know we had Julia, with Tamara, my. Dave, DePeters from the NRO and one other person that I'm. Okay, um, but.
Backstage?
Yes.
Yeah, um, Jack.
Jack, yes, and, um. And we all more or less came out of, uh, those, uh, long day of interviews. Um, with a general opinion and we have follow-up of. We're gonna go and do reference checks and we have three major questions on each of the references, and then we have about three, uh, major questions to go back to each of our. Uh, top three candidates, uh, with follow-up questions, and so we're really excited to kinda get that info back so that we can kinda narrow it down and make a, uh. A recommendation to the larger steering committee. And I think. We're looking to get started as soon as possible, one of the things that Dave brought up was that. Um, you know, July is a big NRO month, and so if we can. Get someone under contract and get some boots on the ground. Um, and not, you know, before August, so that they can, uh, engage with the NRO. Um, guest base and, and be able to throw some QR codes on in brochures or on the front door of the, uh. You know, the Riverwalk Center on some of these, um, concerts, that would be some good data to get right off the bat. Uh, so we don't lose it or try to get it on month 12. Uh, this is planned to be a 12-month plan, um, and it's phased out and there, there are a lot of aspects, but. Um, we have, we have some really good options, so I'm excited to see this through and see where this goes.
Great.
Yeah, anything I missed, like, anything, I, I was so like, this is one of the ones where you get so in the weeds that you're not sure, like. Uh, does anyone have any questions on like, where we were, what we're doing or what, you know? The price tag is maybe somewhere between 80 and 175, based on, uh, they're just to, and, uh, Recreate will be. Uh, funding that from their, uh, COVID reserves.
Thanks for sending through the whole day's worth of interviews, that sounds exhausting.
It, it was, it was really interesting, it was, um, it's, yeah. It's good.
Questions? No. All right, any other matters? We don't, we're, I do, sorry, but we're not meeting.
It's flowers in the median day, which is always.
Oh my gosh.
That, I would have been here at 2:59 if there weren't flowers.
No then? All right. Anything else? Hey. Meeting's really adjourned this time. Not coming back.
Thank you for the warning.
All right. All right. I'm gonna call the Town Council Regular Meeting to order. For June 25th, it is now 7:00 PM, roll call please, Helen?
Marika Page?
Here.
Dick Carlton? Absent. Steve Gerard?
Here.
Carol Sade?
Here.
Jay Beckman?
Present.
Todd Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens?
Here. All right, approval of the minutes, anybody have? Um, any changes to the Town Council minutes for June 11th? All right, they stand as presented, approval of the agenda?
Um, Mayor and Council, we have one additional item under Communications to Council, after the BTO update. The BCA will give a five-minute update.
Great. Welcome, Tamara. All right, this, we are gonna have Communications to Council now, this is, um, your time for public comment, any non-agenda items only, three-minute. Time limit, please. Seeing none, public comment is closed. We're gonna have the BRECC Tourism Office update, Lucy, please. Oh. Okay, one more. One moment.
It's a trick.
Everybody wants to hear this update.
Thank you. Thanks, it's on, good.
Yeah.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, um, first of all, thank you for the very kind words and support, uh, for the Pride event, um, we greatly appreciate. That, um, and thanks to all of you and everyone from town who pitched in on that event. Um, we greatly appreciate that. Um, and thanks to all of you and everyone from town who pitched in on that event. A lot was happening at the ninth hour. Um, we were sampling a new mobility, um, vendor today, uh, when Jay came into the office. And, um, according to their data, uh, we had twelve hundred people on the lawn during Pride. So that's the first time we can, like, really start to look at, like, real-time data like that. So presuming that's accurate, we were pretty happy about that. Um, we did have four LGBTQ plus, um, media in attendance. There came, uh, they were national in scope and they were generating stories on the shuttle on the way home, so. Well-received, I mean, small reach, but very targeted reach, so, um, we're, we're very pleased with, you know, really every aspect of how that event went. We are working on a three-to-five-year plan to build this into a destination event. So next year we'll probably have a little more Colorado outreach, which we don't normally do, um, that we want to take that next step before we start really looking national. But it's really important that we have, you know, two hundred percent credibility every step of the way as we work through this. So we're gonna go slow and do each step really well. July fourth parade, um, the parade will be at ten AM. We're sold out at twenty-four floats. Two marching bands, uh, Rocky mascot from the Nuggets and Bernie, who is the Colorado Avalanche, um, mascot. And Bernie, actually, I learned today, has, um, his or her history as a puppy in Breckenridge and that was the inspiration for this mascot. So, learn something every day. Lodging forecast. Um, so as of Sunday, the twenty-third, our room nights are down for the season, down thirteen percent. And that is through, um, October of thirty-first. May was down about two thousand room nights, June about forty-five hundred. Right now, July is down about twenty-six. August is up. The, the other numbers are too small to worry about. Referrals are up quite a bit and referrals being when people come onto the site. They get on our lodging page and then we refer them to, um, properties, so that tracking is up, but the bookings aren't there. Um, we still have time to make up a lot of this. We probably won't make up all of it, but we, you know, we can make up a lot in July, which is the big, the big month. Um, ADR is up a bit, ten dollars to two eighty-seven. Um, our booking cycle and, uh, notes right, right, so far are not, uh, or they are consistent with our competitive set. Like, everybody's down like six to ten to thirteen percent. Everybody being our five, um, main competitors, four in Colorado, and we include Park City in that mix, too. So it's a little, uh, it's, it's interesting because travel demand and travel across the country, domestic travel is really strong. TSA had their biggest weekend ever, I think, uh, over Memorial Day. And, um, it, it is consistent with what we've been saying. If you remember, post-COVID in twenty-twenty-one, we had that tidal wave crush of visitors. Um, a lot of mountain destinations did and we all agreed that was not sustainable, that was too much. And we knew that would back, back out over two years and we thought two thousand nineteen was a good benchmark in terms of volume, like, uh, room night volume, um, that was a comfortable place for Breckenridge. So I think now the question is, is that two thou, and we're about there. Bill and I spent quite a bit of time today crunching a bunch of numbers, because we used to have Desta metrics, now it's Key Data. BGB numbers are in one set, not in the other, so we've corrected for all of that. And we're pretty comparable to where we were this time in two thousand nineteen. So the question becomes, is two thousand nineteen still the correct benchmark for where we're at today? So that's something I'd just say for everyone to think about. We're gonna do the deep dive on it at our next board meeting. I'll probably circle around with a number of you individually and just have some conversations, see what you think. But I think that's, that's the question. I know what I think the answer is, but what I think doesn't matter. Um, so we'll see, uh, and that will all be in place. You know, the timing is good, because then we will make whatever adjustments we need to make for the twenty-five plan and the twenty-five budget. Um, Dave Burden and I spoke earlier in the work session and he and I are gonna sit down together to make sure, like, you know, what we're seeing at the BTO and we're looking at for planning, um, Fitz, you know, passes his, you know, logic test and things like that. So we're consistent that way. Um, we are already adjusting our media and our messaging to go a little deeper in the funnel now, which should help drive more bookings in July. Um, I'm also thinking we're gonna run summer a little bit longer. Normally, we start our fall marketing in July and we saw our fall creative and they're talking about sweaters and puffies. I'm like, no, we're not talking about sweaters and puffies in July with what's happening with the heat dome. No. So we're gonna just push that back a little bit and keep summer going. So I think, so, and keep in mind, too, when we're talking about these volumes, we're talking about room night volumes, because that's what we can measure and that's what we can influence. What's happening with Colorado day visits, um, is not factored into that two thousand nineteen level. And the data we have on that is intercept data, so that runs about three weeks late, so probably in our next update, I'll have some information on what's happening with Colorado day, if that's up or down. So we're really, like, we know what happens with room nights, but I can't really speak, um, credibly on what's happening with day visitors right now. So, um, that's, that's what I have. I'm happy to answer questions. And I will be coming around.
I have a question about your two thousand nineteen data. Are you saying that we're actually down to the two thousand nineteen levels or are you thinking that we're like, twenty nineteen plus the three percent that?
No, we're, we're sitting at, that's a good question. We're sitting at about two thousand nineteen levels as, as best as we can correct for the different measurements.
Okay, yes. Any other questions for Lucy?
Thank you.
Thanks for all your efforts this weekend and this coming couple of weeks.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, Rec Creative Arts. Tamara.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tamara here from Rec Create. Uh, just to add on to what Lucy said, we have, uh, launched the summer season. We were, uh, very grateful to be part of Ten Mile Pride and it's great when BTO has those earned media partners, um, in town for us to have a beautiful exhibition like we did with Megan Gekler. Really makes, um, Breckenridge stand out from a brand standpoint and gives people something to talk about. So that was a delightful program. Thank you for all of you who came out and saw it and had a chance to talk to the artist and be a part of the art by tying twenty-eight thousand knots. Um, that was a great deal of fun and just beautiful to see the community come together around that. Um, we also have a major role in, in July fourth in animating the arts district campus. Um, we typically see about two thousand to twenty-five hundred people flow through that small space and we'll be animating, um, that place from essentially the end of the, uh, parade until about four o'clock, around that dinner and concert hour, where we really want to see people go back into businesses and patronize all of the restaurants and everything else we have to offer in town. Um, we are doing a float this year and it's really great, because our budget was smaller. Um, and so we were able to partner with every single municipality in, uh, Summit County to do a nature-based art float with our key instructor, Kia Neal, who many of you know. Um, each made a financial contribution to that and it will start in Breckenridge. It, it, we're collecting five hundred milk gallons and creating a Instagrammable igloo with some wolves. Um, very kid-friendly, um, very, uh, poignant to this moment in time and the discussion around the, the wolves. But it will go over the course of the two days, uh, from here to Frisco, to Silverthorn and to Dillon. So that is a great way for us to come together and make the best value of, um, our collective investment in the arts. Um, we are, we had a, I think, everybody had a great time at town party. I unfortunately missed it, but we're always delighted to host that on behalf of the town. And if you have any feedback about the feel or what we can do better, we are always open. And so I'd love to hear from anybody on how we can support that event, um, more particularly, um, as well as town cleanup, too. Um, we, the NRO had its opening night this last Saturday, a great, great crowd, and, um, we are just happy to open the doors. Um, our patron services team staffs all of the ticketing services. It's a shared service. Um, the box office for all of our partners, about five just through, uh, the month of August and over sixty events, ticketed events. Um, so they are busy at work and always trying to understand how we can provide the best guest experience in the town's venues. Um, we are also welcoming, uh, new board members this month, Steve included. Taking a little heat off of his, his presentation tonight, um, with some detail. Um, so our next board meeting is the twenty-seventh, this Thursday. Uh, we welcome Tim West, who also sits on the BTO's board, so it's a great partnership with a, a local business, uh, leader and are the community, as well as Maya Kulik, who is a twenty-year resident of Breckenridge and was involved in the initial, uh, development of the Public Art Commission's conceptualization of the arts district. Um, her role in public health, um, at the county will really help us continue to use arts as a strategy and tool for developing a healthy community, um, with creative outlets. Uh, we also ha, welcome Dave Ratner, um, who, after a career of, in the music business, as a tour manager, publicist and band manager. He, uh, channeled his passion for the creative arts into the Creative Law Network, which is a law firm specifically for creative professionals that he built in Denver and now leads as principal from his home in Summit County. So he'll be a real asset to us just in ensuring that, uh, we are well governed and have, uh, the appropriate contracts and agreements in place that, that recognize each of the various roles. Um, similar also to the BTO, you know, we are looking at, um, working through a lot of budget numbers and where we go using two thousand nineteen as a baseline. Shannon does serve on our finance committee, um, and will be discussing, you know, some of our strategic challenges as well as, you know, where we take, uh, the organization while keeping everything as consistent and po, as possible, um, to enable that cultural master plan and for the town, you as council members and our community to envision what the future looks like in your mind's eye and to remain a leader in the arts field, which we continuously hear in our interviews with, with consultants, that we are, um, a case study that many arts, uh, municipalities and, and communities and landscapes look to in terms of a role model, um, particularly Park County, or Park, uh, City, as we learned. Um, so that discussion will continue through, uh, this week and into July and we look forward to talking more about the big picture and, um, where we take our business plan for twenty-twenty-five. Can I answer any questions?
Sounds great. Question for Tamara.
Can you remind us, what's the plan for the air stage, for the weekly concerts and the?
Yes, thank you. I almost forgot. It launches on Thursday from four to seven, air stage opera, um, and runs through Biffa, which is, um, the last concert will be on August twenty-third, twenty-second, I think, is the Thursday of that week. So we're really excited always to bring the air stage out. I think it's actually a beautiful piece of public art and something that our community has got, grown to love. We will be in neighborhoods again, um, and there'll be local musicians as well as Biffa artists featured during those two Thursdays. Um, and lovely crafts, good, family-friendly, local event. We try and, um, really keep that a local secret. We don't do a whole lot of promotional push, um, but it will start this Thursday.
Fun. I'm sure everyone's looking forward to that. It's been popular. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to new business. First reading of Council Bill Series twenty-twenty-four, Council Bill number eighteen. A bill for an ordinance amending chapter two, oh. Nope, sorry. Rewind.
Continue.
Uh, continued business, second reading of Council Bills. Council Bill number seventeen, a bill for an ordinance amending Policy Three, A Density Intensity of the Development Code. Cliff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, before you tonight, I have the second reading for Policy Three Code Amendments. Um, this is regarding the vestibule, um, the permanent vestibule on nonhistoric structures, um, and then a clarification of density bonus for properties outside the Conservation District. Um, there's been no changes. Staff recommends approval on second reading.
Thank you, Cliff. Any questions for Cliff? Any members of the public wish to comment on Council Bill number seventeen? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number seventeen, Series twenty-twenty-four, the title of which has been read into the record twice.
Any further? I'll please Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, now we're into new business. First reading of Council Bill number eighteen. A bill for an ordinance amending chapter two, public parks.
I'll take this one. Mayor Owens and Members of Town Council, before you is first reading of a, um, ordinance to revise the town's, um, chapter regarding public parks. It will update the list of parks, including, uh, River Park, Rotary Snowpaw Park and Prospector Park. And also additionally, um, clarifies what has already been in practice for a while, which is, uh, allowing the Riverwalk Lawn to be managed in conjunction with the Riverwalk Center.
Great. Thank you very much, Scott. Any questions? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number eighteen? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number eighteen, Series twenty-twenty-four, a bill for the ordinance amending chapter two, public parks.
Back in.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right. Um, now we have an appointment for the Social Equity Advisory Commission. Ojala Vatas, are you going to, gonna make this motion?
I would be happy to.
Okay, great.
Soon as it loads.
I can get it.
I got it. Um, I move that we affirm the recommendation made by the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission and appoint Ojala Vatas as a member of the commission for a duration of three years, beginning in July twenty-twenty-four.
Do we vote on this as normal?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin. Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, welcome to her. Sounds like we're very lucky to have her and all of the applicants. Um, planning commission decisions, planning matters, planning commission decisions. No call-ups? Great. We've already done the report of town manager and the report of mayor and council members. Anything to add? Any other matters? All right, the scheduled meetings are in the packet for June, July and August.
I have one change.
Oh.
The Breckenridge Events Committee will be Wednesday, July tenth at nine thirty, not Wednesday, July third at nine.
July tenth.
Move.
Seems easier to make. That sounds great. I am going to adjourn the meeting. Being adjourned.